Call the third public hearing to order. This was posted, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 5th, beginning at 7:15 PM. And we way overshot that, I apologize. At Newton Town Hall to discuss, take public comment and act upon the following items. There are three items, so I'm going to read each one and go and stop and discuss that one. So the first one is, "Application by Joseph and Linda Mador, 41 Highland Street, Tax Map 5, Block 4, Lot 20, for discretionary preservation easement to be placed upon their property in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 79D." Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this?
Andrea can present.
Okay, great.
Can I have a question?
Yes, please.
Good evening, my name's Andrea Louie, I'm the Town Assessor. This evening, as you discussed, or as you mentioned, we have a public hearing on three barn preservation easements. If you don't mind, you know, go ahead and read any of the other names and then I can, I would think I'll start with the Nikoles, only because they've already had an easement on their property.
Okay, I'll read them really quick here. So the second one is, "Application by Beverly M. Batchelder, 42 Thornell Road, Tax Map 6, Block 8, Lot 7, for discretionary preservation easement to be placed upon their property in accordance with NHRS A 79D." And the third is, "Application by Nicole Farm Partnership, Inc., 26 Merrimack Road, Tax Map 12, Block 6, Lot 15, for renewal of discretionary preservation easement to be placed upon their property in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 79D." Turn it back over to you.
I want to like to explain a little bit of what RSA 79D is. It's called a discretionary preservation easement. And in 2002, the legislators decided that it was in the public interest, they believed it was in the public interest to preserve historic agricultural buildings. To that extent, they decided that what they would present to towns is to say, if you have property owners that are willing to preserve these structures, to give them some kind of relief because of the cost, the discosts to preserve those old structures, the town would be able to grant them an easement that would allow either anywhere from 25% to 75% off their assessment. They found that there was reasons, a way to determine how there's a public benefit of these structures would be, is it, does it add to the scenic enjoyment of the community? I guess just like your scenic roads we've just been talking about. And also, where were, you know, as far as the age, if they were 75 years or older, there is some history there that they would like to preserve. And so, that is what's happened since then. And the Nikoles actually were the first to do it in our town here. And it was a 10-year easement that the Selectmen at the time had granted to the Nikoles to preserve their barn. What I'd like to do though, I don't know if everyone's ever seen their barn, so I would like to give you, show you a photo of their barn. It's absolutely gorgeous. I think they've done a lot of work on this barn.
Me too.
They've seen the barn a couple times. Where is this?
Merrimack Road. I'm sorry, yes, is that 24 Merrimack, or 26 Merrimack Road? A little history on this barn. The barn is about 100 by 40. It's a three-story structure plus a cellar. It's currently used agriculturally, and I assume it's still for boarding horses, storing hay, and provides repair space to the fixed farm equipment there. The original classical architectural style of the barn has a significant historical and cultural value to our town. The barn is believed to be a kit barn built in 1904. This type of construction is historically significant because it represents the national transition from the locally milled and erected barns to off-site pre-cutting followed by assembly on-site. Michelle actually shared with me too, they've, they're actually, their structure has been put into a magazine called Timber Framing, I believe. She doesn't really want to get up here and have to talk. But that barn, as you can see, would cost a lot of money for its upkeep. And the purpose...
Thank you.
I was going to go ahead and show, because it's, I mean, there's a lot to it. So the purpose tonight is, when they started this in 2006, it was a 10-year easement on the property. When you grant easements like this type, the minimum is 10 years. You can extend it to more years if you, if you feel that, you know, there is, there's no sense in coming back 10 more years later, as we are doing tonight. But during that timeframe, the barn's been maintained, they're doing what they're supposed to do with any kind of tax savings, they're supposed to go back into the barn to preserve it. They're using it for agricultural purposes. It's not like they've renovated it into apartments or offices or anything of that nature. So they're doing what they're supposed to do. So, at this point, I would like, I would recommend that the Board continue that preservation easement on that structure, because it does add to the scenic beauty. If you just drive down it, you can see it. And I think it's something that, you know, you should be proud of that you have in the community, because there's not, if any, left in the state at all. Does anyone have any questions? Or would Mr. Cushing, or Ray, or Michelle have anything to add to that this evening? Read mine.
Yeah, if you want to come up.
I didn't want to cut her off.
No, come on up and talk about it.
We have a long history.
Good evening, my name is Steve Cushing. Some of you don't know me, some of you do. I've been involved in town affairs for about 25 or 30 years. I've been a Selectman, I've been on the Conservation Commission, I've been a police officer, so on and so forth. Anyway, I'm very familiar with the structure, as I worked on it for two and a half years with the Timber Framing crew that repaired it and restored it to its original state. And the, probably to the embarrassment of Ray and Michelle, the decision to do this was an agonizing one for them, because it actually was a much more substantial cost than destroying that structure and erecting a new barn on that site. And they chose to go with the restoration direction, even though it was more expensive to them. So they had a real commitment to making this come out historically correct. And it is. I can assure you from a carpenter's perspective, that, you know, that all the beams that were rotted were spliced using the traditional methods. The structure is a fabulous building, and it's one of the largest barns in the area that's still in use. So I would hope we could continue with this easement. Anything the town can do to help keep some of this. There's very few barns left in Newton, and that really was, we were pretty much a rural community at one time. It'd be nice to try and maintain a little of that if we could. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Andrea, you looking for another 10 years, five years?
I personally, and I did run this by them, I would, I would extend that. I would think that you could go 20 to 25 years. You can see the condition of the barn. It's not something that they're not taking care of, they're not doing what they're supposed to do. Obviously, 10 years goes quick. Sometimes I think about, you know, when we first started this, I believe that, at that time, someone had recommended like, I think it was 50 years or something. And it was my opinion at that time that the RSA was too new, that we didn't want to, you know, extend it that long, only because we wanted to make sure that everything, that the RSA was adhered to. And it's obvious that they're doing everything that they're supposed to do, and I would extend it, that would be my recommendation, to 20, 25 years at this point.
Do you want to talk about the others?
I could do that, absolutely. Let me just get out some pictures too, so the Board can see that. The other, the next one I'm going to talk about is Beverly and Edward Batchelders. They live at 42 Thornell Road. Others, you might be familiar with the property. That is the Forest Reynolds property, that the town currently already has an easement of historic preservation on the structures themselves. And I'm sure you can add to that story. But what I will tell you is that, it's known as Hidden Acres, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but there's a house, there's a barn, and there's a blacksmith structure as well, and that's also, so they want to put the barn and the blacksmith structure into the easement. It was many years ago, it was used as a small dairy herd and milk route was through there, and was used as the dairy farm. They had to sell off the herd due to some medical issues at that time, and that was in the 50s. So then, as time went on, they operated the farm until retiring in 1970s, at which time they dismantled the flock of houses, so flock houses. At this point, what they're trying to do is, and I'll show you the photos, as everyone knows, it's very costly to maintain these old structures, and it's nothing, it's, it's one thing to maintain your home, because we need to do that, but to have these old structures is an added expense that sometimes people decide that they can't afford it. And so I'm going to go show you these photos as well. And I think that they are trying to put back into it as much as they can. I believe I wanted to make sure I had a, they're currently raising mixed fruits, vegetables, and poultry for eggs and meats, of course. The buildings are in need of repair, including the sills, the shingles, and other major minor fixes that would need to be done. And so they're asking for some kind of tax relief, so they can take that tax dollars and put it right back into the structure. Just the photos.
Forest Reynolds. See, you threw in the picture of Forest on it.
Yeah, yeah, I should put that in. Why is me?
I had to do the action report when he rolled his horse carriage.
Is that right? Mr. Batchelder, do you mind if I speak on this? So do you mind if Mr. Batchelder gets up?
Absolutely, go ahead.
Thank you, my name's Ed Batchelder, at 42 Thornell Road. Yes, we have requested that we could place an easement on the property to give us some relief, to enable us to continue, you know, putting the extra money that we would save in taxes back into the buildings. Forest sold the development rights to the town back in, I believe it was 2003, and he was paid for that. And that, one of the stipulations was, they wanted a preservation easement on the, on the house, and the barn, and the milk house at the same time. But he was not compensated for that per se. But, so, we are under a watchful eye to maintain the place anyways, by the Oversight Committee in town here. But however, there's no assistment in doing anything. So we, it's all out of pocket naturally, as it should be. But we, we have requested that, if we could just, I'm requesting a 75% devaluation in the assessment on, on the blacksmith shop and on the barn, because those are the two that need the work. Right now, we're currently putting a new roof on the barn, which is around $7,000, and my son and I are doing it. But I mean, this is, it's serious money, and the taxes on the, on the barn certainly aren't $7,000. So over a period of 10 years, we would probably break even in the savings, you know, with the other work that needs to be done. And on the blacksmith shop, I don't know if any of you are familiar with the property, it was a, it was an older building that was not taken in under the easement with L-CHIP, but it's a building that was built at the same time that the house was. It has the same architectural trim and whatnot, but it has steadily been rotting and just settling into the ground. And our long-term plan is to turn that building into a farm stand where we could sell vegetables and whatnot, to augment our, you know, our little vegetable business. And my plan is, I'm a carpenter by trade anyways, but I want to turn it into a, even almost like a museum thing, with, so the interior would be like an old country kitchen, and with ability to bring schoolkids in. And we have had some interaction with sample in school to, to, you know, get them involved to it. So it's, it has some educational value as well. So on that, I'd like to request, I think the taxes, the assessment on that was, is around $900. So, I mean, it's minimal on that. I think it was recommended that it be torn down. But one of the things that I'm, I mean, a little concerned with is if, after we get this all fixed up, you know, and then the assessor comes in and assesses that it's new value, I mean, we could actually end up spending more. Really not worthwhile. So I'm requesting that we could get a 75% devaluation on the both, both pieces. Thank you.
Anybody? Please, Mr. Cushing?
Yes. One thing I wanted to add, so the Board is aware of it, when we place the easement on there, any of the improvements that are done at that, from, for the 10 years or the 25 years, where, at that time, it freezes that number, okay? The only time it changes is when we do reevaluations in five years, we can look at it and say, okay, this is the market value, but if you take 75% off, it, we then will take the 75% off. So it allows them to make the improvements, but doesn't, you know, continue to tax them at a higher rate, so then all of a sudden, it's kind of a moot point to even have it. So the good thing about it is it does freeze that, except during the revaluation years, when we can look at it again and say, okay, the new market value is this, but you still get 75% or 25% or whatever the Board decides.
Thanks.
I'm back again. I don't know if any of you are familiar with the L-CHIP that was mentioned. This is the Land and Community Heritage Investment Program. I was involved in this property, being involved with that program, through my relationship with the Conservation Commission. And this particular property was the very first property in the state to qualify for all three categories of L-CHIP. Its natural aspect, its cultural and historic aspect. So I think if the Board can find it in their hearts to do anything to help keep this structure and this whole operation standing, I think it would be a good idea. There are very few actual, even semi-working farms anymore, and they are definitely moving in the right direction with this. They're doing repairs, they're expanding the scope of their produce departments. So I think this is, you know, looking into the future, this is going in the right direction, where most barn-type properties are going in the wrong direction, where they're deteriorating and becoming unusable. Thank you.
Thanks.
Does the Board have any questions on that particular property?
Do we want to move to the last one, the third one, last one?
This is Linda and Joseph Mador. I'll give you some pictures of that one as well. They've given me a letter. The barn is, to the best of their knowledge, was built in 1800s. The structure has been used for agricultural purposes, but is in disrepair. It's attached to the house and on the southeast corner. And I'll let you know that this is at 41 Highland Street, sorry, I should have mentioned that. They purchased the property in May of 83. Since having ownership of property, they've used the barn as a dog and cat kennel for the years of 1986 to 2000, and the property was also used as an herb farm from 1983 to 2000. They go on, they talk about the previous owners and kind of that history of that. But by design, the structure, it appears, the barn was used to house animals and farm equipment. There's an opening underneath the barn where the machinery has been kept, and have since filled that in and strengthened the foundation. So there were some issues with the foundation, and of course, here we go again, that's why they're here. It's a three-story barn with no flooring on the top floor, with sliding doors on the second floor for the, as the hay loft, and there are remnants of housing of the chickens. The inside structure is wide board floors and log posts. We now, we now, we know that the structure was used for animals, as we have found bones on the property to justify this. Since ownership, we repaired the foundation and three walls that would have collapsed without repair. Currently, the barn needs a new roof on the east side, which, which we intend to replace in 2017. An estimated cost is $8,000. The remaining walls are in stable condition, where only some boards need to be replaced. As they, as they continue to restore the barn, our intent is that we will remain in agricultural use long after we no longer reside on the property. They also wanted to say that the property, about a 43-acre Christmas tree farm, which is in current use on the west side of the property, is a residence that was built in 1746 and owned by the Hoyts. Due to the fire, due to a fire, the barn for that property was destroyed. And I think what they're trying to do is paint the picture, that it is, you know, you've got the scenic area behind it, and that's what you're trying to preserve here in town. They say, to the best of their knowledge, few of these structures remain in town. Most of the historical structures are located on Main Street or in close proximity. There are two historical barns that are located on Thornell Road. So they would like you to consider this property. They have been doing some work to it. I will show you some photos of kind of a before and after. I will tell you that some of the renovations has changed the look of the structure a little bit. So I'll let the Board see the photos to explain that better. You can start there, and I'll get out the new ones. This is what they're looking at, because it's in black and white form at this point. This is the change I'm talking about. So if you look at this picture here, this is what's now happening. This one's just gotten bigger, they've kind of put double doors here.
They're making, it looks like they're almost making it into an apartment. You got a porch up there, French doors down here now. The remaining of barn, or they redoing the inside of the living?
They say they're leaving it for agriculture purposes. Show the other numbers. No, I think that, you know, obviously, everyone that's applied for this feels that they're doing what the law is requiring them to do. I personally totally support these requests, maybe at a different percentage level. For, in this particular case, I feel that 75% off the assessment would apply to the Nicole Farm, would apply to Mr. Batchelder. I'm a little questionable on the other one, only because the structure is starting to change in its look. I would say that one side almost looks like a garrison house, and that isn't the intent of the law. The law is to preserve it, yes, but you start to change the look of a barn, I'm not sure if the Board would like me to get further information from them, to make sure that there is no intent to change the use of the structure.
So let's table that for a second here. Anybody else want to speak on the subject of the three of these barns? Now, I'm going to read from the posting. It says, "The applicants must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the Selectmen that their application provides a public benefit through the preservation of the historic agricultural structure on their property. If such a determination is made, the terms and conditions of such an easement will be discussed, which may result in the lowering of the assessed value of the property encumbered by the easement." Okay. So, any other public comment here? All right, I'm going to consider the public comment closed for these, these easements. And I'm going to ask the Board if they have any motions or anything they...
I'll make a motion to allow the Nicole Farm Partnership, Inc., 26 Merrimack Road, to have a 75% decrease in the taxes on the barn only.
Well, how many years?
20 years.
Second.
Okay, Larry was the second on that. Any discussion?
Which one?
This is Nicole.
Nicole, the first.
Oh, okay.
Have you heard about which?
My only discussion is, I'd rather keep it at 10, just because I, I know that Nicole's a very, much adamant about keeping, maintaining the barn the way it is, but if something happens, and it changes hands in 10 years, new owners automatically, the easement goes with the property, not with the owner.
It does. I will tell you that there is a penalty if you do not continue maintaining it. We do have an avenue to penalize the property owner and to remove it from the easement, plus impose a penalty.
However, as we know, as we discussed earlier, the wheels of municipal government turn very slowly, and things have a tendency to, I, personally, I believe 10 years is a very good period for an easement like this.
I would normally agree, and if we were talking about one of the other properties, I would say yes. But this is a piece of property that has already gone through with the 10-year, and they were a pilot. So they've gone through the 10 years, they've gone through the maintenance, but not changing. I'm okay with increasing this one to 20 years, so that they don't have to come back in another 10 years.
Bob, what are, what are your thoughts? It's your motion.
It's your motion.
I'd like to keep it at the 20 years.
Okay. So I'm going to, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So it's unanimous?
Yeah.
I didn't hear your aye. So that one carries, so that is the Nicole Farm. So anybody want to talk about the Batchelder Farm?
I would, I would make the motion to award them an easement for 10 years at 75%.
Do we reset the percentage?
Yes.
You also set the percentage?
I will second that motion.
All right, discussion?
What was the percentage in here?
75, okay. With the 10 years.
For 10 years, cool.
Personally, I've known this property for most of my life, and it definitely falls within the historical, I mean, there's been a number of things that have happened on that property, in that barn, for years. For years, one of our fire trucks was stored there.
I heard some rustling, is there anything?
No. What Mr. Batchelder brought to my attention is that there's a hundred-year easement on the farm itself. And he just was kind of questioning the ten years versus going into...
It, I'm just following previous tradition. It seems that the first ones we do are ten years, and then we make them further.
That's kind of what I told him, that that's why the bar, that you're kind of talking about ten years.
Exactly. So, you come back in ten years, we see that you've been living up to the easement, and then it gets better as it goes on.
More years.
But I do see that, at least when you're driving down the road and you look at that property, you see old-time New Hampshire. And that's what I like about the property, and I do want to see us maintain that.
I agree.
All right. Any further discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, that's unanimous. So, we have the third one.
I'll make a motion for the property at forty-one Highland Street to Joseph and Linda Mador to have the tax successor look further into, because I believe it looks like it's going to be a change of usage, the way they're rebuilding it. So, I'm looking for more information.
I don't know that we need a motion for that.
Yeah, we probably don't need the motion.
I think you do.
Okay. As long as the motion's on the table, is there a second?
I will second.
Lisa will second.
It's for the discussion. My concern is not so much for what they say the continued use would be, but the purpose that, from reading the RSA, which I like to do when they're given to me, is to maintain the historical and scenic integrity of these buildings and these structures, which is what the Nicole Trust has done, which is what this one has done over here. Looking at these pictures, I'm looking at a modern looking. I would really like to get a better idea because if it's, it may be old, but if it doesn't look old... It's not preserved. It's not preserved. It's updated to be in the twenty-first century. And inside, okay, fine, but exterior, which is what the public will see, I really want to see that historical look. And I'm not seeing that here, so I'm concerned.
All right, so, I think that we need to call for a vote on that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? So, we're just going to...
I was just going to make a comment, but...
Go ahead.
Oh, I just, I, the Hoyts were members of Mike Range.
This is Mador.
It's now Mador, it used to be. I knew the previous owners. I'm glad to see that they're doing something to structurally improve it. I do agree, and I don't know, is that a picture of the barn or a picture of the back of the house?
That's actually the barn. You can see, here's, here's the before.
And this is what that section now looks like.
The guy in Chronicle that does the stories in the old town.
Okay. Yeah, I'd reserve, is there any limitation on us taking this up at the next meeting?
I don't, I think that you can take it up at the next meeting. I can, I'm here tomorrow. I can call and ask if I can go over and speak with her and kind of go through it and see what the intent is for the future use. I'm concerned of the future use. And the exterior interior, so yes, I, yes.
This is a public hearing. Once the public hearing is closed, we then take up the issues at hand.
Correct.
Yeah, the public hearing is closed.
I'm making sure that there is no tax, you know, it's one of those, you know, how things have to be done by April first and by April thirtieth. This is nothing that if we put off a vote for two weeks, that we're walking them out of the abatement.
Right, you're fine with the year timeframe right now.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, we will take this up at, in two weeks. We'll ask if you can't join us, Andrea, send along what you found out.
Sure.
And then we can see if we want to vote on that again. But, but other than that, that ends the public hearing part of the agenda. So, we're going to take a break just long enough to switch the tape, basically. And we're going to charge right along to our normal agenda and try to get out of here before morning. So, but everybody else who's done with the public hearings, thank you for coming tonight. And we can, we can let you out of here and go home. Thank you.